For the public hearing tonight, Local Law Number Five for the year 2004, amending Chapter Twenty of the zoning code. I hope you'll be able to give the public the comments at this time.
What will you be discussing on the, Ron Langloes, Seventy-One Champlain Street? What will you be discussing on this?
We're not discussing anything. It's up to you people. This is local law. Local law five. This has been-
But I have a copy that was from what was so-called on the agenda for tonight, I believe. Like, Section Three, One, Twenty, Dot Seven, travel trailers and signs and-
Yeah.
Fences, hedges, doors, containers, etc.
This is all been discussed. So, it's a public hearing, so you can discuss-
Just pertaining to this?
Pertaining to that.
Nothing else?
Nothing else at this time.
At this time. Okay.
Yes, there is no one that wants to-
Well, Mr. Mayor, just a minute, I'm getting woman handled. Mayor, one of the agenda items, I'll stick with Ronnie's, uh, words, is for fences and, uh, hedges, which is strange as far as I am concerned, because I've never seen that appear anywhere otherwise than in the context of a law, as you mentioned, but I wasn't aware after a year or more of doing my due diligence with the, um, committee on, uh, subjects of that nature, that there was any problem at all with the law as it existed. And I was surprised to see this, and I thought perhaps you'd made a mistake. And then I said, "Oh, my God, no, not George."
Yeah.
And then someone else nudged me and said, "Yes, he can make a mistake." But nonetheless, to bring it back to law four, I've seen nothing wrong with the present law that exists as far as those are concerned. And if you have some reason specifically for the law being changed, I'd like to hear it.
We have no-
And then I would like to supplement what I'm saying.
Uh, we have, as far as I'm concerned, it's up to the rest of the board. This came from the zoning board. Was. What's the old law say?
What are we changing?
We're not really changing anything. I believe that we're adding a new section to the section on corner visibility, and I believe that the intent was primarily for snow removal. So, if someone plans to put a fence around their property or plans to plant a hedge, then enough clearance be left primarily for the sidewalk snow cloud to go by. That was really the intent when we were talking about it in the committee.
Says all fences and hedges must be located a minimum of three feet from the boundary of any village sidewalk or village right-of-way. And that's the only change that's been put in.
And the intent, and the intent really was for snow removal purposes.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. -- I understand. However, a couple of subjects now arise. One is, is there a grandfathering clause or the equivalent in this law that somehow permits those, and I prefer to speak on hedges than fences, those hedges to, that exist today to remain without trying to move them thirty inches if necessary?
We did discuss that as well. I think it's prior to your being on the board then, because this, these changes are quite, were done quite a while in the past when they were started. But we did discuss that. It's really primarily, my understanding was, for new, new hedges that would be put in. And I think the idea is just for the property owner to, to keep their hedges or their fences now maintained well enough so that the sidewalk cloud could get dropped.
Okay. And will the law be worded such?
I don't believe it is right now, no. It certainly could be. I mean, I think that-
I think that it should be, I guess I should say. I'm sorry if I asked that.
That should, probably, right, should sit in there as anything from this, you know-
The reason I say it, George-
Prior to this date is, because we do have some that are right on the sidewalk, and it's impossible, and we've asked the own property owner to move them, and it refuses not to, that there's nothing we can do.
Well, I'm not trying to make it sound crazy, but I'd hate my hell to have to try to get reimbursed for the cost of what these hedges can cost. You know, I mean, if you say, "Well, move your hedge," it sounds simple, but once you come to a consensus, you find that it is not.
Although, I figure it, if the village wants to move the hedge, it's up to them to move it.
I agree with you, but I didn't want to suggest that.
I got a forty-five-foot cedar hedge by my house, and it's right touching the sidewalk, but I keep it trimmed and stuff. And if the village wants to cut it down, let them cut it down. I don't care. At their expense. I ain't gonna care about it.
No, right.
You know, I mean, it's on my property, but it's been there for forty years now. You know, or thirty years. I don't care.
I think Larry's concerned with our answer.
Pretty likely. I'm not talking to the world here.
Uh, based on trust-
My other suggestion, George, just in the event that this does get pushed further, is that you guys, or you guys meaning the village, sacrifice that thirty inches that you feel is, or thirty-six inches you feel is so important, and restrict the dimensions of your right-of-way by that amount. Why should you go around adding thirty inches all over town where we all have to pay for it? It's just another alternative hedge.
You also have to remove the snow, Larry.
Oh, yeah.
And if you put, if you put a hedge and we've gotten places in this village that are like that-
Yeah.
It's impossible, and I think Benny can allude to that.
He'd be more aware than I, yeah, right.
Yeah.
And it's impossible to remove the snow on the sidewalks.
Well, I, I'll quit while I, I think I'm ahead, but I may be at even.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Dennis Roberts, Forty-Three Smith Street. I too have the same concern. I have a hedge on my property. It is not right to the sidewalk, but I believe it's not gonna be within that three-foot, uh, area that you're talking about. I'm probably about two and a half feet. But I do keep my hedge groomed, and I make sure that my sidewalk is clear. And I think it's very important that you do have a grandfather clause in that law.
And we put the date from here on in that everything is decided. That's, uh, it is a valid point. Phil, can we act on this tonight? No, if we want to change it?
You should have him reword it.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Close the public hearing on, uh, local law five at this time, and open up the comments from the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board, they do so. Please state your name and address.
Uh, Ron Langloes, Seventy-One Champlain Street. Actually, I want to discuss zoning, okay? I, I felt that I couldn't discuss it prior because you have the other, those on the agenda. Uh, I believe I'm gonna open up a big can of worms here, pertaining to zoning on the north side of Champlain Street between Zachary's Pizza and the Mountain Mart complex, okay? Back in, from September to December of ninety-four is when, at the time it was not the Zoning Board Appeals, it was called the Land Use Committee. And they made recommendations, what should be zoned what, okay? Whether residential, commercial, whatever, et cetera. Well, as it turned out, uh, on September sixth, I've got minutes of all the meetings of what transpired from September through December. Okay? The big issue was between Priscilla Lane and Champlain Street, which is north of Champlain Street. Okay, it was called, we, we had a petition with a hundred and sixty-some odd names, which actually there's two current board members that signed it. Whether that is relevant or not. Anyway, uh, to have that zoned residential, okay? And, uh, on the September sixth meeting of nineteen ninety-four, on page two, right at the bottom, it says, I'll quote, "After more discussion, Trustee Duprah moved that Champlain Street north from Elm Street to Academy Street be changed to R-nine, with existing businesses being grandfathered, seconded by Trustee Manor, four As, one Nay." Okay? What we want to know, okay, that was, that's when they were voting on the zoning law, okay, at that time. And there's nothing that states in every meeting thereafter that that was changed. What happened was, is that parcel was zoned commercial from Zachary's to Priscilla Lane, or Hinson Drive, I'm sorry, Hinson Drive, was zoned R-nine, which is residential. And west of the phone, Hinson Drive to Mount Mart was commercial, C-two. We want to know what happens. That's all we're asking. How did that get got split up, half and half, when it stays right here? I know you guys weren't involved in this, and I know I'm opening a big can of worms because there's something going in there across the street that we're all aware of now. And it didn't catch our attention until we thought everything was okay, you know, until we heard about this so-called drugstore coming in, which, you know, don't get me wrong, I'm for a drugstore, but I'm going by what's in black and white here, okay? And I think this village board and mayor should take responsibility what transpired back then with the prior board. It says right here, and if you go back, you research, you go through all the village minutes, nothing was changed pertaining to that being zoned residential. Yes, there was a lot of discussions with Hinson and Menard at the time that owned the property, okay, but nothing was changed on paper. How that got split up, half and half, C-two, R-nine, we do not know, okay? We had a big petition. What's this, just not the people on Champlain Street that wanted that residential. It was a hundred and sixty-some odd names, village-wide, that signed that petition. We presented it to the board. They acted, okay? I know this is a big can of worms we're opening up, because, you know, it's been zoned that way. I don't know how it, it never got changed. And what I'm asking, requesting the village board is to check into this before, you know, I know this guy here that's wanting to build a drugstore, spent money, and blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera, you know, but what I'm saying is, we thought this was a done deal back then. That's why nobody questioned anything in the past since ninety-four, okay? So, I want somebody to come up with an answer. How, when did I, that I got changed, split up, half and half, R-nine, C-two? When everybody, when the village board at the time voted for R-nine? And I guess, uh, in a nutshell, that's it. Because I'll tell you what, a lawyer would have a field day with this.
I wish I could ask you, but I can't.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is-
I have no idea.
Pardon me, George?
I have no idea, but I'm hot.
Uh, neither do we.
Yeah.
Okay? It was passed four to one.
We've asked the village clerk to research all the minutes. I think you people asked for that.
Yes, and this is the village clerk. Thank you very much, the village clerk. She's not here.
No, unless she's--
Well, well, I meant, I meant, uh-
No problem.
Sorry.
Not that easy.
No, I'm sorry. I meant, uh- I met Carol.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Yeah. Yeah, but, uh, so Carol was very, uh, informative. You know, she did a good job on that. Thank you, sir. But, uh, you know, and what happened, transpired there is we have a copy of the so-called adopted December. Basically, it was adopted on the December fifth, ninety-four meeting to pass the zoning laws, okay, by the village board, okay? And they were never changed in here. This is a copy of all the zoning laws.
That might be your answer then.
Yeah, well, why weren't they changed when they were, when the village board in September said residential?
But what I'm saying is, is that that, the zoning board may have, or the zoning committee, whatever, presented that, and nobody looked at it and passed it card blank?
Well, see what, what, the impression I'm getting, I'm just assuming. Okay, it was a gentleman by the name of Richard Lamb, who was the architect behind this thing, okay? Designed the maps, okay, drew up the zoning plan. And then it was up to our Land Use Committee and village board to fine-tune it through the months, okay, for every monthly meeting that they had. Well, there's nothing at all the past meetings that states anything about changing anything.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying is that it fell through the cracks. Apparently, apparently, that's what I gathered. Apparently, it fell through the cracks. They took, they took the law that, or the, the plan that was drafted and adopted it.
You think maybe that once Mr. Lamb drew up the map, he never bothered, or nobody communicated with him to change the map? Because the map shows, yes, the map at the village office shows C-two, R-nine. Like, on the west side, C-two, and on the east side of Hinson Drive, R-nine, okay? But map, map don't, don't mean nothing. Black and white, the writing means something.
The law was adopted, the zoning, the zoning thing was adopted by the village board.
Yes.
And, and that's the law.
Yes, but it was also adopted in September sixth meeting to have that residential.
You're right.
Yeah, I'm aware.
It's a change in the zoning, George.
Yes, I am. But I'm going, what is right here on paper. If something transpired behind closed doors that nobody knows about, we don't know about, how would that happen when it was voted four to one? And never voted against again in the following meetings, okay?
And apparently in December, when they adopted the zoning, nothing was said, so they adopted it.
Yeah, but George, September sixth was voted.
I'm just saying what I'm saying-
And it was never changed up until the December sixth meeting. Why wasn't the wording changed in here?
Can't answer that.
Well, the law's the law, I guess. When the vote, village board votes on something-
They had a public, public hearing on that.
Right, yes, it wasn't both that-
And in December, and not a word, apparently, nothing was said.
Okay, so that means the September sixth meeting, four to one vote, had that residential, was not contested, and it stayed the same.
Either was the law, and we, and they adopted the law. That's what I'm trying to tell you. That's the local law.
Yes.
It's a law.
But the village board was dictating what the local law, law was at the time. When we were voting, every monthly meeting, there was discussions on the zoning, until it was actually adopted on the December fifth meeting.
But what I'm trying to say-
So, well, what I'm presenting to the board and to you, sir, the mayor, can we get some answers? Can somebody check into this?
The only thing we can do is check into it. That's the only thing we can do.
We've researched everything that we have in the file that Carol and I could find have to do with the minutes that we have here. And the only thing, although they did, uh, Trustee Duprah did make the motion, and it was passed the September one, when the final public hearing in the local law was adopted, there was a motion by Trustee Manor, and there were three, uh, three board members present that night. There was Mayor Bata, Trustee Manor, and Trustee Duprah again. And those three people voted aye to adopt local law number six, which is showing on that local law where it was changed back to apparently that C-two. There's nothing else we have in the files other than what we've been able, Carol and I went through the minute books for all of ninety-four.
What was changed back to C-two?
The area from Hinson Drive west to Mountain Mart.
What meeting was that, sir?
Where was it changed?
It was, the only place it was changed was in the local law that was adopted that night. That's where the change showed. It's where it shows a C, C-three commercial.
It shows a change in the local law?
It showed, this, the only local law that was ever presented. There were public hearings discussing the various zoning issues that were going on land use. But the only time the local law was presented to the board for adoption, I grant you, they, they did make the motion, Elaine made the motion to, to have that as, as C, uh, yeah, C-nine, which is, R-nine, which is residential. But when the actual local law was adopted on December, the night of December fifth, ninety-four, in that local law, it shows that particular area as C-two, which is commercial. That's all I can tell you. How it got changed from one to the other, I don't know.
I think that is, well, it's a matter which it should be really there, and everybody else has screwed it up, uh, that there was a clerical error following the initial, uh, procedure. And, uh, when they put it on another piece of paper, that piece of paper was the clerical error. And if everyone is following this, it's just wrong. That's all.
Uh, Judy Kelly, Champlain Street. There was a meeting, I'm sorry I didn't bring my copy, I do have one at home, said there was a meeting in the inner office, and there was not a time to notify people, and it was only the people who were in that inner office. Nobody knows. I wonder what, what else went on in the inner office besides what's in the letter.
Can't answer that either, ma'am. I wasn't there.
No, you weren't there, but Mr. Hinson was there.
As I say, I can't answer. I would, you know, I wish I had those kind of answers. I don't, I don't have anything. I'm sort of sitting here miffed.
So, may I have an opinion from the board? What are you guys gonna do?
Research it.
Don't know how we can research it much more than we have. We can't go, everything that has been available has been researched by, and when the local law was passed, that's how it was passed. I don't know what can be done about that-
Okay, yeah.
At this point. And I understand the situation.
Okay, well, I know what Mr. Bahama said. Okay, okay, on December fifth, Elaine Duprah with three board members, whatever, blah, 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 here, you know, passed, uh, you know, made a motion to pass local law number two for the year nineteen ninety-four. Well, that should have included what was voted on, on the September sixth meeting of nineteen ninety-four by the village board. So, you know, it's a good job, you know, okay? We don't know that.
I don't either.
Okay? Well, this is what we're, where else are we gonna go for answers? Decide, you people, okay?
We've been talking-
You know, and maybe you don't have the answers, but if there was an error made, it's up to this board to correct it now.
I'll make a suggestion that we turn this over to our attorney.
Well, that's, would be your suggestion, sir. You're the mayor.
That's what I'm saying. I'm gonna make the suggestion that we turn this over to our attorney for an opinion.
That'd be fine.
It's about talking to the people, not to Mr. Hinson and, and Tom Bata.
Well, see, I, I had a long discussion with Tom Bata-
You did?
On the phone, when he was mayor at the time. And he said, the impression the board had at the time was Francis Menard and Mr. Hinson, his plans were to do a hundred and forty units, it's in the minutes of the following meetings, a hundred and forty units of apartment buildings on that property. And they also mentioned it was gonna be no, no commercial. They wanted to do totally, at the time, apparently, that they had the money or whatever, they wanted to do all apartment complexes, a hundred and forty more units, and homes. Okay, fine. And so, I know Mr. Bata had several meetings with Hinson Menard, okay? And but, and I know that Mr. Menard and Hinson, uh, were a little upset at some of the meetings pertaining to how the village board had passed that residential, okay? And, but nothing transpired out of it. In other words, they dropped it or something. Now, I, I'm just assuming again, but I know they had an attorney. Hinson and Menard had an attorney. And they threatened to sue, blah, blah, blah. Now, whether it was some closed door hanky panky going on, I don't know, okay? How this got slid in there on the map, showing it, C-two, R-nine, don't know. I'm not making accusations, okay? Uh, it just looks suspicious, okay? And like I said, I think your, your attorney should check into this and get to the bottom of it somehow or another, okay? Because we're, we're just going by that what we have as far as in writing, on paper. And according, we feel that, I'm representing several people, by the way, on the street, that we're right on this, okay? And somebody so-called screwed up in the past, okay?
That's my, that would be my recommendation to the board, that we turn this over to our attorney for an opinion. But you can tomorrow morning.
Come to the next meeting, Ron. You can give you an answer, maybe.
Maybe.
Well, I thank you very much.
Unfortunately, we're sitting here almost the same way you are.
Oh, yeah, I know you're flabbergasted over this. I know that.
We had no idea what went on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, like I said, I, you know, back then, when we, we attended those meetings, back then, we thought it was a done deal, so we didn't pay attention, right? We just, you know-
And I can understand that too.
You know, I mean, we just let it slide because we said, "Well, okay, this line, you know, was already voted on, and then, and blah, blah, blah." So, we didn't do a whole lot about it, you know, until now.
All right, that, that's, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna turn it over to our attorney.
I just have a question for Phil, though. Phil, you, you probably know more about the zoning. Is it, it's my understanding, though, that until a local law is passed, it's, the work that goes into writing it is really considered just a draft.
Correct.
So, even if a motion had been made to include something in a draft document?
It wouldn't be final until the document was approved.
Right, and, and I know-
And I understand what they're saying, you know, from what happened in September to now. I think the only thing you, everybody has to keep in mind, when, when we asked Mr. Renee for an opinion, he's basically gonna tell you, it is in your local law that it's C-two. If the board so chooses to amend that local law, that's gonna, that's their decision. But as far as finding out what will happen, he's not gonna be able to tell you any more than us. He doesn't even have access to what we have.
Right, and, and very often as well, I know even with the zoning law that, that we were just having a public hearing about, the work is largely done in a, in a committee or by a group of people, including Mr. Renee. At least, this one was, but, um, not everything that gets included in a local law necessarily is made by motion of this board-
Oh, no.
During that time.
I think that was very obvious when they brought up the subject about grandfathering. I mean, it wasn't in there.
I have a question for Ronnie. I have a question for you, Ronnie.
Yes?
What are the people on, on your street, think about the drugstore coming in, and you kind of get the impression that you're against it?
Pardon me?
What are the feelings of the people on your street regarding the new drugstore that's proposed to go in?
Well-
Are you in favor of it or against it?
Well, okay. No, we're, we're not in favor of having commercial across the street when we thought it was supposed to be residential. We're not, no way are we against having a drugstore in town, okay? Okay? We're, I, that's not the point, okay? I mean, I, I'd love to have a drugstore in town, okay? But what I'm saying is, is, is when it, it, when I found out about it, okay? Et cetera, et cetera, then I, I said, "Geez, I thought that was supposed to be residential, more or less," okay? And that's when I started questioning and got, et cetera, et cetera. And then, and the ball started rolling, all right? Now, as Mr. Bahama said, okay, or the, the discussion prior to your question prior- Now, as Mr. Bahama said, okay, or the, the discussion prior to your question prior is, yes, they adopted the laws, but see, see, at that time, it was only a committee, it was not the zoning board of appeals officially.
Right.
It was just people that were either asked or, okay? And at that time, the village board made the decisions, not the land use committee, that's what it was called. It was not an official zoning board of appeals until ninety-five, correct? Okay. So the, the village board made the decisions on what was recommended or thrown to them or, you know, given to them by the land use committee. And therefore, I kinda questioned the, the comments you were, statements you were saying prior, okay? It was not an official zoning board of appeals.
No, I understand that.
Okay, it was just a, a land use committee, several people thrown in the group.
Right, and I wasn't, I was not implying that it was. What I was talking about was, was Trustee Duprah's motion, and the fact that other things that may have been included in that draft that was finally voted on as the local law, which did not necessarily come from the board of trustees.
But there was nothing, you would think that something as important as that, okay? Well, you're gonna determine property, residential, commercial, et cetera, et cetera, okay? Especially with a petition with a hundred and sixty-some odd names, et cetera, et cetera, okay? You would think that if the village board wanted to change it back to C two, R nine, it would have been in the minutes discussed, at least at some board meeting, to have that changed, and there's nothing. That's what I say, in my opinion, an attorney would have a field day with this because of the wording of the minutes of the meeting that, that transpired thereafter. Nothing mentioned until the December fifth meeting to adopt the zoning laws. Boom, done, okay?
I just wanna add, Judy Kelly Champlain Street, that this a hundred and sixty names, we were given three days to get it, and we scoured around for three days, and so we didn't reach them. But if you read those names, they're over the entire village, they are not Champlain Street.
Oh, I saw it.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I looked at it.
Yeah.
What is your feeling on the, on the drugstore versus Kelly?
I despise it.
You do?
If I look out my kitchen window, do I have to look at a metal building with signs all over it? I paid taxes for forty years here, and I don't think I deserve that.
What's your feeling on the drugstore? Or not drugstore, excuse me, the dental office?
Dental, that's a professional. We were here at that zoning meeting, and we had no objection to that. I object to a metal building that's got Radio Shack, and they say a gift shop that is like the dollar store. We went down to Keyesville to see it. Down in Keyesville, they have a cement block building with painted white that is in the business section.
And that's wish to address the board this time, may do so.
Yes, my name is Ray Jewett, I'm with U.S. Energy Services, we're a consulting engineering company for a telephone company called Vermont Telephone Company, abbreviation of VTEL. And they are running a fiber optic network throughout New England for a New England grid, and we'd like to run one here in Rousas Point to help redundancy from New York to Montreal, or New York to Boston, through a loop. And it's for high-speed data in transmission. And so we're here kind of to let you know what we like to do. It's a heads up that we are proposing to do this. And we were over here, we were talking to your director of public works, Brian, and he said, well, we have a sewer project, an outfall, along the same route you wanna go. So we ended up talking with Phil, and so far, we haven't had the objections, but we wanted to come to the top table here and find out. If you have any questions or objections to what we propose to do, we would like to utilize your toward upper area, when you put your line in, to put a conduit from perhaps the bridge all the way to your water pollution control treatment plant. And then from there, we'd wanna cross your property out to Route two seventy-six, we have to cross the two railroad tracks there now. And so we're here, if you say definitely no, we've gotta find another route, which would be along your streets, and we'd have to dig it in, or if you say yes, we'll pursue it further. So I'm requesting your thoughts.
How quick do you need an answer, sir?
Uh, well, as soon as we can, you know.
I just have one thought. I don't really know how to reject an, a conduit in the, in the same ditch, but I'm not sure we can legally do that with an outfall line. I just wanted to check with the state.
Whoa.
You know what I'm saying? Because we can't let water and sewer in the same ditch. I'm not, and I'm not sure about this. I just, I'd just like to have that cleared.
We're, we're, I'm, I'm not sure either. I know we've done it before with a sewer line and a fiber optic cable, but I don't know.
Where, in Vermont?
Yeah, but New York State operates a little bit different.
How deep do your lines have to go?
Uh, minimum of three feet, and if you want us four foot, whatever, we'll go.
You put it in that ditch there, it's gonna be deep.
Yeah, but we wouldn't put it right on the pipe, we'd put it in somewhere near the trench area.
How would you get across the lake?
Uh, that's what we're having a problem with now. We wanted to come along the causeway, and then come up over onto the bridging crossing and go back in the causeway, but it's all riprap, and we can't get into it. So we were gonna go on the north side, and we find out there used to be a road on the north side, and so we can't trench through there. So now we're looking at the southerly side, and it looks like we'll have to do an awful lot of directional boring, because you have a wetland on this side of the lake, on the southerly side, and we had the same problem on the other side, but not quite so bad. And it may take us six months before we can determine that.
Is it DSL line or just for data for computers?
It's, it's data. Homeland Security uses it for a tremendous amount of information. There is two, two sites in the United States Homeland Security use for a database. One is Norwich, Norwich University in North York, Vermont, and one is somewhere else, I don't know where, in, in the United States. And this will be interconnected with that.
Does that work for Homeland Security, do I?
My suggestion to you is that we'll check with the, the D E C.
Okay.
You know, they had no objections on us. I don't know about, I've just pulled a board, but I, I really don't have an objection.
It's a brand-new idea, but I don't have any objection.
I think it's a great idea, at this point.
This, this way, we'll stay out of your streets.
Well, you gotta have a hundred twenty, Doc. We could rent that, too.
I can write you.
Well, who'd we, keep the taxes down.
Who would like contact, and might know what's your decision, Phil?
Phil. That man right over there, the smiling gentleman.
All right, I'm gonna leave my card and ask him to fall in. I don't know, who fall in? You said it.
I, I, I really think there's no objection, but I just wanna be on the safe side. I wouldn't want you to put that all in, have to take it out, Bill.
I can assure you, we, we don't wanna do that either.
We, we may, because of the bridge, we delayed in getting in here as quickly, we'd like to start soon as we can. But we would like to put conduit in just in case that we do, you know, get across, and then we can save time, save the fiber through it. So we'll wait then until we hear from Phil, and I thank you very much for your thought.
Thank you, for doing that. Anybody else wish to address the board this time? Go ahead.
I was, I'm pushed around by the, uh, village residents, and I just got back from overseas, and the village of Rousas Point has been very supportive, and myself and others, who have just been back. So I look to the board, and all the village of Rousas Point, clapping my head open, it's like what's going on in that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appropriate in the boardroom here.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If not, I'll close this session of the meeting at this time. You'll have a chance at the end of meeting to address the board again. Your local law, I don't think we'll take any action on tonight until we get it corrected in that meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, you all have copies, is there?
Can I have a, just to make sure I'm understanding what you want, you, you're, I think we're gonna ask Mr. Renee to include in that local law that existing fences and hedges that are in place now are basically grandfathered in by the governor's standards.
By the date we adopt this local law.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, all have copies of the minutes, do you have any additions or deletions? If I entertain a motion?
Got it.
Motion by trustee Hockrow.
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, you all have copies of the bills, it's a, it's a pleasure, do we have any additions or deletions? Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, can't you?
Motion by trustee Jefferson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hockrow, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I have a letter from Montgomery Post Hook and Ladder Company, addressed to Mayor and trustees, who wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months. Brad Martin, Twenty-Eight Rose Avenue, Rousas Point, please act on this member as soon as possible. Respectfully yours, Sean Shagnow, Secretary.
Motion by trustee Moore.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the next letter we have came in today, it's now on the agenda, it's a letter from Grand Isle County Sheriff's Department. It's addressed to the Rousas Point Police Department Attention, Aaron Lefebvre. I was asked by the chief if I could read this, it's correspondence. It says, Dear Aaron, the Grand Isle County Sheriff's Department, I'd like to thank you for the excellent job you did with the planning and participation with this year's camp. The outstanding job the presenters and volunteers did with the law enforcement day really engaged the campers, and once again, was one of their favorite days of camp. The campers had a great opportunity to interact with you and other law enforcement staff. This helped them build a strong sense of belonging and community. Thank you for your continued support with the youth of Grand Isle County. It's signed Sheriff Connie Allen and Deputy Jeff Leibery. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Phil. Tonight's letter. Reports of the mayor and trustees. First thing on my agenda tonight is to request an executive session to discuss pending litigation. Let's put that in formal motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee Jefferson, low call vote, trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Next item is declared surplus Mohawk lift and associated load management equipment and compost equipment. The lift will not go up for bid, it will be scrapped, because it's been condemned, and there's no way that we can do it, and it has to be, it has to be surplus. Load management equipment is equipment that we, we have had for our load management system that is causing us now grief and our substation, and it must be removed. It is valuable, and we have a possible sale for the possible equipment. And also, people that are interested will pay, you'll have it taken out, so we don't have to pay for it. On that, and the compost equipment, I believe was surplus several years ago, but nobody seems to know about it. I think it was surplus bid back when you were on the board.
I was more than a couple of years ago.
But anyway, I need a motion on that.
Got it.
Motion by trustee Hockrow.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And results of the generator bid, Phil, you wanna read that, please?
Yes, we put it down in the paper, or leave it on the paper, and we received two bids. One was from J E Sheen Contracting Company, they bid nineteen hundred dollars for this generator, and North Country Medical Center bid three thousand dollars. These bids were opened at ten AM October first, which was last Friday. And you can make an award to the high bidder if you so wish.
I'll make the motion. Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me, trustee Hockrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to request the clerk to ask our attorney to draft a local law updating our village code section nineteen dash six E, accumulation of vacations. The purpose is to increase the amount of vacation for non-union employees as they can carry over from one year to the next, from ten to fifteen days. This would be in keeping with the, the item in the contract with the union employees.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded, motion by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I'd like to request an executive session to the staff's office personnel.
Second.
Seconded by, motion by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Penfield, low call vote, trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
I have, and I've shared with, I just got it today, shared with the members of the board, a sketch of a mock-up of a, of a new village logo that if adopted, I'm not sure exactly the process we have to go through at this point, would grace the new size that will be entering the village, hopefully next spring, next summer. Don't want any action on that, this, this time, but I just wanted to share that with you. Another item, this evening at six o'clock, we have a meeting of the Fortis Life Committee, first meeting for the two thousand and five season. Good turnout of people, we have some suggestions for some new activities for next year, and if anybody out there knows where we can find a small car, let us know, we'll kiss you.
Or a big one.
A big one would be great, too, but a big one probably won't come to us both, but it would be great to have a car. And I'm also asking anyone out there that would be interested in cheering our craft show, if they would come forward. Mrs. Moore has resigned because of her work schedule, but she would be willing to help, and she would certainly be around for the layout next year, but we do need a new chairperson. I do have a couple of people in mind, but come forward if you would. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Hockrow. Trustee Penfield.
The only thing that I have this evening is an update on the sewer improvement project. Aaron Jarvis is here from Fizdale to give us an update and answer any questions that you might have. My understanding, though, that the contract signing was held on Thursday, things went fairly well. Aaron, do you have anything to add to that, or?
Just that Axe Two Construction has started mobilizing to the site, they expect to start digging the forest main on Monday, following all the staging this week, and digging on the outfall the week of the eighteenth. And other than that, things have been going well. Contractors are starting to submit their shop drawings, and at this point, we would expect construction on most of the contracts to get started within a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Trustee Penfield, trustee Jefferson.
The only thing I have tonight is I would like to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to go out to bid for substation electrical materials, some stuff that we hadn't planned on, and Kurt Wilson has advised us that we'll need these materials, so to expedite the project, I'd like to ask Phil to publish this. That's all I have tonight.
Nope, I need a second to that.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it?
That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Moore.
Yes, I got two things. Question from Brian Dell and Eugene O'Clair, Lieutenant, one-day seminar approved, October twentieth, this is the contact hours for recertification, and it's only thirty-four dollars for that. I think that's a motion.
Motion made by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Those opposed, motion carried.
Second thing, I got a letter from Gary Malinsky. He was, I know he couldn't put a fence around the new water tower. For some reason, he was wondering if he could budget it for next year if he could, with the Board allowing him to put a fence, maybe not around the whole area, maybe around the tower. He's concerned about vandalism and graffiti writing on it.
I think it's a good idea not to do the whole property, though, I mean, to try to just keep it, you know, keep the expenses down, but I think it's a good thing for security, too.
Anyone have a problem with it?
Well, there wasn't a problem in the beginning with the fence. It never was a problem, it was a question of economics. And I don't think if he budgets it, that's, you know, we'll look at that issue when the budget comes.
That's a good idea.
Thank you, trustee Moore. Okay. Director of Equal Development.
Thank you. I'd like to just let you know that we are assembling the components for the boat launch grant from Parks and Recreation, and Phil and I have been working on that with our attorney and the engineer, getting the boundary map, the legal documents, and so on. But before we can put a shovel in the ground over there, we will need to put up that Bond Act sign. And so, I wanted to ask your opinion in terms of what the project name should be. Everything else is pretty self-explanatory. The Village, the sponsor would be the Village of Rousas Point, and of course, Mayor George A. Rivers. But would you like it called the Village of Rousas Point Boat Launch, or the Rousas Point Boat Launch?
Village.
Village, I agree.
Village of Rousas Point Boat Launch. I actually like those decisions. Those are the nice ones to bring to the board. So, if that's the board's.
Done that, done, done.
If that's the way to go, okay. And I will then go ahead with your approval and order that signed. It comes from the Department of Corrections, and very inexpensive, and it's, of course, an eligible expense under the grant. Phil and I are working, as I said, on putting that together. I would like to have a packet for you that pretty much takes you through the whole project by the end of October, and then we'll ask you to approve the signing of that contract. The mayor, I hope, will be willing to sign the equal employment opportunity policy statement for me, and we'll get that off.
He's the officer.
He's the M W D. officer, and we love, we love him for that. He's the king of paperwork.
I'm not sure if you're really careful.
But we'll, we'll get that all together for you, and also start talking in real terms with, about the construction of the crew, you know, the part, the crews part of the project, with Mr. Letourneau about the money we should plan on for, in terms of getting all the, until we get the reimbursement, you know, he's very serious about these things, so we'll, we'll try to sit down and do that in-house and have that for the board at the end of the month. I, I also would like to thank you for sending me to the Planning Federation Conference, and so, I was, I missed the last meeting. It really was excellent. I brought back a lot of good information. I was very pleased to see that Alan Sorensen, who is the head of the Main Street Program, was a presenter, and so, I attended both of his sessions and had a chance to talk to him about Rousas Point's Main Street application, which, as you know, went in on the twentieth of September. Very pleased to hear only one hundred and forty-three communities applied for that program. And I don't know if they're going to divide the twenty million into two halves, but if they do, then, you know, that, I think, really helps our odds in terms of, of that grant, and we should hear on that with any luck next month. I also would like to just thank our village historian, Donna Racine, and let you all know what she is doing. She has been combing through her files, coming up with historic photographs and postcards of the downtown buildings, because we're assembling a building inventory, and I have a digital photo of every building at this point, and what I'm hoping to do is scan the historic photo in on the same page, so that, you know, hopefully, we do get the award, we look at those facade renovations, we have the original to draw from for ideas. And we had our deadline on the RFP, on our whole visioning and revitalization plan proposal. Five firms responded. We hope to have interviews next week, and the proposals are all upstairs in the Village Conference Room on the table, along with the RFP, should any of you like to review them. We left them there for the convenience of the board and the steering committee, in case anyone would like to take a look. And unless you have any questions, we're, they've been sent down to the Department of State, Paula Marshman is reviewing them. I'm going to speak to her Wednesday morning and get her recommendations in terms of choosing the firms to interview. Any questions on any of the projects?
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Doug? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please, Phil.
I'm not on the agenda, but just a little quick reminder for everybody that you and I will be attending the I E E P conference Wednesday and Thursday this week, so we won't be in the office. That's all.
All right, Sam?
I'm not traveling anywhere.
Thank you. All right, now.
Just a couple of quick things. I just want to let everyone know that we've got the easement papers from Mr. Renee for Mo's Restaurant and for Shuzy Hardware, and so, tomorrow morning, we'll be traveling to meet those people and obtain their signatures to facilitate the installation of the new sewer outfall line and enforcement by Shuzy Hardware. Number two, we're looking to set up this week, hopefully, Brian Pelkey, working this week. Okay. We're looking to set up a final punch list walkover for Maple Street, and we'll get John Carr here, since he's an engineer on that, and also, I represent from Luck Brothers, we worked out Brian Pelkey here, myself, and Eric Schwanke, and we'll walk Maple Street, hopefully, the last time. And lastly, we receive, we received test results on the old water tanks paint. It is lead paint, so we have that information now, so for any prospective buyers, or salvagers, or dismantlers, knowing all that it indeed is lead paint, and we'll have to do appropriate OSHA actions and dismantle it. Any questions?
Thanks, Doug. Ryan?
I'm not listening.
Aaron, I'm sorry. Sorry. Aaron?
I'll send.
Open meetings in public at this time again?
I'd just like to make one comment with regard to what Doug was talking about with regarding the old paint. Aaron, are you handling that aspect of that, or is that going to be still John Carr with regard to the water projects that we have going on? Because at one time, once we, the last I heard from Mr. Carr is that once it was ascertained whether it was lead paint or not, that he'd be able to proceed with, seeing if there were people interested in it. We had a couple. He was talking to people up in, in Chateaugay at the cheese factory, he was talking to the Village of Champlain, and if neither of those are interested, then things are going to have to move, find out what's going to happen with that old tank, and what our next step is, okay?
I guess I should have asked what John promised before I said I'd do it, but no problem.
Okay, thank you. And one other thing also, what was the name of that insta-valve that we were talking about to disconnect the old water tank from the new one? Instead of contracting to have a company come in and buy this valve, and put this valve in and install it, it's going to be about seventy-five hundred dollars. It was suggested that we, by Gary Malinsky to me, and I talked to Brian Pelkey, and I talked to some other people, that we consider buying the actual equipment to do it ourselves, because right now, we can do up to an eight-inch pipe, but buying the adapters to go to a ten and twelve inch, which I understand we have a lot of these sized pipes in the Village, we're buying the adapter, and the folks that were buying this adapter to do this larger pipe, they're going to come over and, and kind of give us a on-the-job training of it, and that's costing us a hundred dollars less than it would have been to buy the services of this company to come in, and we'll have this equipment to use later on down in the Village. So, I just wanted to let you folks know that that is on order.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time, we'll throw a motion for recess. Got it? Trustee Hockrow.
Second.
Trustee Panfield. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess in five minutes.